Good evening, and welcome to the Committee of the Hole Meeting of February 2nd, 2015. First, I would like to give a great big thank you to our board members and our administrative team who are willing to juggle some significant personal commitments and work commitments in order to get this important meeting in this week because we have some important work that needs to be voted on next Monday night. So with sincere appreciation, I thank you for your ability to work this out. We'd also like to thank our administrative staff and our maintenance crew because while most of us enjoyed a couple of days off for snow days, they did anything but enjoy a couple of days off for snow days. Our maintenance crew's been working some 16-hour shifts trying to get our buildings and our parking lots and so forth ready for school to be back in session, and it does not go without being noticed and being thanked. So we have a number of items on our agenda tonight. First item is audience communication. I do not have any blue slips. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Nope. Seeing none, we'll go on to our next item. If you are interested in following along with our agenda, there are agendas on the back counter. You could also follow along on your agenda on our website, levoniapublicschools.org. If you go to the Board tab and go to your agendas, you can grab our agenda. The different thing about our agenda tonight is while the items are listed on our agenda, we are taking them in a different order, and that is intentional. We have a couple of board members who may need to leave us before our meeting is complete, and we want to try to make sure that our voting items are handled before anyone needs to leave our meeting this evening. So we will be handling most, if not all, the items on our agenda, but they will be coming in a different order. A couple of items on our agenda that you may see, our quarterly report for the bond from Plant Moran Cressa will be delayed till next Monday, and our Code of Ethics discussion will be delayed until either next Monday or the following week or two after that. I don't have the date in front of me. I believe that it's March, maybe March 2nd, but that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks. The reason for those delays is we wanted to make certain that all of the board is present for all of those discussions, and we're not sure if we can get that all in tonight. The first item on our agenda tonight is building a site, and we will be hearing from Mark Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Paul back to talk to us. We're going to hear about bid results for the Phase 2 projects for our bond issue, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Allison.
Thanks so much. Really, it's pretty exciting to be back again. We feel like we're just finishing up our Phase 1 last summer's projects and putting all of the paperwork to bed, and we're starting all over again, but really excited to be bringing these bids tonight. We've got the binder in front of you. We're going to go through, Paul Terrio from Plant Moran Cressa is going to go through each of these, so I don't need to, but as we mentioned, this is just the first phase for Phase 2. This is just the first group for Phase 2. We will be bringing the elementary schools in Franklin later in March. The elementary schools are at the committee meeting, and then Franklin later in March. I'm sure Paul will talk about the timeline and schedule a little bit as we go forward. So tonight, we're looking at Emerson, Riley, which will be our 5, 6, and 7, 8 schools for next year. We also are looking at a bid for technology computers, and Mrs. Allison, the IT crew will join us at that point, and then some extensions and contracts for some of our professional services. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. So it does seem strange to be back here again, all the way around one cycle of, you know, having bid everything out last year and then put everything in place. So went by fast, that's for sure. So today, we have five different bid awards that we wanted to present. Each one of them is a little bit different, so we wanted to kind of take some time and go through each of those separately. We tried to keep it easy again. We've got a binder put together and have it all tabbed. Does everybody have one that's tabbed? There's a couple floating around. I think I left them upstairs, but hopefully this will be nice and easy to get through, and you should be able to find everything. And it's the same format as last year, so it should be consistent that way. The first one is the construction bids for Emerson and Riley. That's Tab A. So we have just kind of a cover letter kind of outlining that process. Those bids went out on December 15th, and they went out basically over Christmas break and then were due in early January. We actually had almost 100 different bids on that project, on those two projects, from 60 separate firms. Some of the bids were to do work at both schools. Sometimes, we asked for separate bids for each school depending on the volume of the work and whether it was manageable for one firm to do or not. We had very good bid coverage. We only had one category that only had one bid, and it was testing and balancing company. Typically, we only get two bids on testing and balancing. There's only two firms that do the majority of the work in the area, so we thought it would be prudent to open it up, and we were pretty happy with where it came in at. So but other than that, we had pretty good coverage on mechanical and electrical, masonry. We've got some new players, including some local guys, which we were happy to see bid. So all in all, it was pretty good results. I'd like to take a minute, too, to just acknowledge Stephanie Hatchey is in the audience here from Barton Mallow. Stephanie put in the lion's share of the work on all this, getting all these documents put together, chasing down bidders for us, and going through them all, all the post-bids that they had to do, all the post-bid interviews with the firms to make sure they had the scope and all that stuff. Stephanie and Scott did the majority of that work, so I just wanted to mention that.
Stephanie and Scott did the work last summer at our Roster Schools, and they'll be back this summer again. So we're very pleased. They got us open and on time and everything this summer, so a couple of late nights.
Yep, we're definitely keeping the team together. So in grand total, including the CM fees and contingencies, we're looking at just under $12 million for these two projects, and that letter in Section A1 kind of details all of that. These are prime contracts directly with the district, so there'll be contracts written from the contractors directly to Levoni Public Schools. The CM fees and staffing costs and personnel costs will be an amendment to Barton Mallow's contract, so that'll be a separate amendment to that contract that already exists, but all the prime contracts will be new, and they'll be written over the course of the next few weeks, once assuming the board approves this next Monday. Section A2 just kind of gives you an overall budget summary. So you can see the Riley construction budget was $5.7 million. We came in at about $6.4 million, so about $700,000 over budget. We had kind of anticipated that that project may come in a little bit over based on some of our estimates, so that wasn't too surprising. Emerson came in about half a million under, so that's pretty close to where we had expected both of those to come in at. Last year, if you remember, our estimates were a little bit off. This year, they're a lot tighter, so I was happy to see that. So all told, on the hard construction, we're about $182,000 over budget. I should mention, too, this includes some alternates, but it doesn't include the big alternates that we had wanted to take, which would be the media center mechanical units and really some of the ceiling and lighting at Riley's Media Center. It doesn't include some of the kitchen mechanical units and shop mechanical units that we had hoped to do over at Emerson. We didn't think it was prudent to ask to go over budget by, call it, $800,000 at this point, especially with the elementary school bids not coming in until today, and I'll give you an update on that in a little bit. And then with Franklin, obviously being the big variable out there, not coming in probably till, I think the bids are due early March. So we thought it would make more sense to wait and see how those bids came in, and then we'll know exactly where we're at for 2015. And then if we come in favorably, we may come back and ask you to reconsider some of those alternates that we're not presenting tonight, but really, until we have those results, we didn't want to bring it today.
And the reason they were alternates is they were never in the original scope of work, but it's one of those things that once the architects and the construction managers got into the building and said, you know what, while we're here, these are equipment that's original to the building, they're going to fail, you know, it makes sense for us to do this while we're here. So while there's some efficiencies, we bid them as alternates because, again, they weren't part of our original scope of work.
Yep. So you'll see the construction costs are about $182,000 over for the two projects. The CM fees and costs are about 150 under, so that's, and then the contingency, we're basically carrying 10% contingency for both of those. And I did want to touch base on that. Last year, we kind of kept those contingencies for each building separate and tracked them that way. What I was hoping to do this year is to look at each bid package as its own combined project. So instead of looking at Emerson and Riley separately from a contingency basis, we would kind of lump them together and call it the Emerson and Riley contingency. You know, as we actually approve change orders and go through and move dollars from one budget line item to another, we would certainly track them by building, but it would give us a little bit more flexibility if there's something that comes up, like an alternate we want to go back and take, or something that we discover while we're out on site. I think it would just make it a little bit easier to track. So we proposed doing the same thing with the three elementaries, to combine those three contingencies into one fund, so that if we end up going over at one school, but we're under at another one, and we're still net to the good, where we're returning money back, we wouldn't have to come back and formally move it around, so to speak. I don't know if that makes sense or not. If you remember, last year, we returned about $500,000 back to the contingency fund at the end of the summer, but we had to come back twice and ask to just move money from one line item to another. I'm just trying to prevent that. So we have about $1 million set aside, or $1.1 million set aside for contingency, and then you can see overall, we're about $252,000 over budget for these two projects. And again, that includes some alternates. We have some science room flooring at Emerson. Sorry, I have a cold if you can't tell. We have some science room flooring at Emerson and some other smaller alternates that we've accepted, but the major ones were the mechanical systems that, they weren't part of the original scope, but we thought it made sense to do them while we were here, but we bid them as alternates fearing that we may come in over if we accepted them, which was the case. So if you go to A3, this just kind of lays out.
Go back to A2 for a second.
Sure, yep.
I'm just not following the total project costs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So for example, if I add the Riley $6.7 million to the Emerson $5.7 million, it doesn't equal $11.6 million under totals.
Oh, wow.
Then that would be a math problem.
Yeah, that is a math problem.
Yeah, and if I'm looking at the variance, I would expect the variance to be about $110,000 here, and it's showing 250.
So let's find it.
It's a math problem.
11, 12, it is, so that bottom cell is wrong. So the construction cost is right, the CM fees are right, the construction contingency is right, but the total has, you know, I don't think it includes the, it doesn't include the CM fees.
That makes sense.
We should bring it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that does make sense to me.
So we'll get that out in your packet.
So the total project cost, just for your information, the total project cost is really the construction plus contingency, right?
It's about, yeah.
That makes sense.
Total budget was about 12.5.
Yeah, because if that was in the red, 250,000, but we're to the good, about 140,000 in CM fees, that would leave us at about 100,000 right now over budget, which is where I thought we were at. That makes sense?
I'm going to approve this three times, too. I think I would have noticed. Thanks for catching that.
No problem.
So we'll get a correction page on that then before Monday?
Yep, you'll get it tonight.
Okay.
A3 then shows all the individual scopes of work, so the first one being concrete, then masonry, steel, carpentry. You can see who all the contractors are. Lydell &amp; Hart is a local Levoni contractor, so we are happy to get them to bid this time, and pushing them hard to bid on Franklin as well, because that's a big masonry package that they'd be great for. I think overall, the numbers that I ran, we were about, I want to say, 25% of the contractors were from Wayne County in this book tonight, which is pretty good. I think that's a little bit better than it was last year. We tried to reach out to them a little bit more and get some of the local vendors to respond, so I was happy with that. And I think about 80% were probably from the tri-county area, so it's all local vendors for the most part. But you can see the bid category, who the vendor is, what their base bid amount is, and then the next column is for their PLM bond, their performance labor material bond, any alternates that we approved, and then the total. So you'll see that that adds up to $4.4 million for Emerson, and if you flip back to A2, you'll see it's $4.4 million for construction costs. There were a few vendors that actually asked to have their bids rescinded, and there are some letters that are attached behind here that explain that. One of the electricians, J&amp;J Electric was the apparent low bidder, but they asked to rescind their bid because they found a pretty substantial error when they had put it together. We had another carpentry company that asked to pull their bid, a flooring company that made a mistake. So that tends to happen, as long as it's an honest mistake. We usually don't make a big deal about it, because we do want them to bid the next set of projects. You know, if it was something after the award had happened, we may look differently at that, but at this point, it's, you know, if it's an honest mistake, then it's not that big of a deal. Did change where we came in a little bit. Originally, we thought we'd be under, but nothing you could do about that. So that's A3. There's, you know, all the backup explaining Emerson's numbers, where they came in, some of the bids that got pulled. Then you'll see behind that is Riley. So again, a lot of the same categories, concrete, masonry, steel, carpentry, windows. We have a lot of the same contractors from last year, some new ones. Most of these people, Barton Mallow's worked with them before, I worked with them before, so we have a pretty good sense that we've got a good group of contractors here, and then we're expecting good things of them this year. We have a different casework contractor. You may recall, we had some issues with the casework, so this firm does a lot of high-end science casework, millwork, things like that, so we're really going to be on top of them to make sure that they don't drop the ball this year. A4 just gets into a little bit more detail on the CM fees and costs, so you'll see the same $4.4 million number at Emerson, but then you'll see the CM labor cost, their office cost, general conditions, and fees, which gets you to $332,000, which if you flip back to A2, ties back to that number. And then as well, you've got the contingency amount for Emerson of $440,000, which gets you to a grand total of $5,183. And then the same thing for Riley. One page that lays out the same way, so you've got the subcontract cost of $6.4 million, plus the CM fees of $372, plus the contingency of $643,000, which gets you to a grand total of $7,446,000 for Riley, which ties back to A2. And then the last section in Section A is just a tabulation of all the bids that came in. Those bids are here. They're actually in Lisa's conference room, if anybody wants to look through those at all. They are here for your review. But this is just a tabulation of where they came in, and I think all the low bidders are highlighted in green, just to make it easy to find them. And again, if you look at the two projects, sometimes the contractor's the same, because we bid it out as a combined bid. Sometimes they're different, so the electrician is different on both projects, the mechanical contractor is different on both projects. But we think we've got a pretty good cast of characters put together for these two. Any questions about Riley and Emerson at all?
So if I could just stop there, and as Paul mentioned, just, you know, if you want to go home and go through this, if you have any questions at all over the next several days prior to Monday, give Paul a call, give Lisa a call. They'll be able to answer any questions that you might have on the details here, or certainly feel free to come in and look at the bid tabulations that we have up in the back. Just again, call ahead of time, so Paul can be there to answer any questions that he might have, and we'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have. I think it's, as it was last year, pretty well laid out, and, you know, the bottom line is, we pretty much took the lowest-qualified bidder in every, every single case. In some cases, as Paul said, you know, someone may have dropped out, but pretty straightforward, but it's a lot of information, so, you know, we certainly wouldn't expect you to be able to, you know, cover every inch of it tonight, but over the next several days, please feel free to contact Lisa and Paul and get any questions. please feel free to contact Lisa and Paul and get any questions you have answered before next Monday.
So that takes us to B, which is the next set of awards.
Paul?
Yep.
And just, thank you.
All right.
Oh, I know you were, I think we all are, it's because we just got the stuff. Next set of bids, can we have them early?
Um, you know, we're, we're a little bit challenged with, with some of the holiday breaks, just the way that things fall. For the March ones, I think we present on March 2nd, pending any snow days.
Yeah.
And then, I don't think you guys vote on them until March 16th, so I think in that case, you do have two weeks. And then for Franklin, again, because we're challenged a little bit with spring break, we'd be bringing them, I think, the 23rd of March, and then you'd be voting on them only a week later on the 30th, so. We tried to, to work around the holiday breaks as best we could, but usually, we wouldn't be presenting on Wednesday for a following Monday vote, but just the way it's.
Oh, I understand that, we all understand that. But, I mean, just saying, just, if we can have the packets before, when we get our board packets, at least the information, that would be helpful, and that way, we're not thumbing through them and not real, not being able to ask any good questions ahead of time, so.
Sure. Yep, we will strive to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
That takes us to B, which is the technology portion of the bid award, and this is really for computer workstations that were bid out, and I believe those bids came in on January 15th as well, so there were seven different proposals that were received, and after going through those, the technology team, which I should again mention, Rob Gregor's here from Bart Mella Technologies behind me. Rob kind of spearheaded a lot of this effort, putting the RFP together and bidding things out and evaluating those bids that came in, along with, you know, district staff with, with Tim and with Sheila and Matt Linder from our office, so they spent a lot of time going through those to make sure that they were apples to apples as much as possible, and that things were complete. But those bids came in very competitively, if you want to get back to the bid tab section, you'll see the numbers are pretty right on top of each other. And they are recommending awarding to Inacom, a contract in the amount of 3.28 million dollars, and then we're looking at carrying a 10% contingency on top of that for a total of basically 3,612,086. That's Section 1, is kind of the award recommendation letter.
And if I can just highlight also, what we're talking about is the teacher station in every classroom. We're talking about the computer labs across the district being replaced, and also the computer workstations in our libraries being replaced. And so this is our centralized location replacement computers for every classroom and library and computer lab across the school district. What will be coming later is the added technology that we wanted to put into every classroom for mobile learning devices. That's later, so this is the big fell swoop, and, and I don't know if you were going to, but it would probably be worthwhile just talking about what computers are going in there, I don't know if Tim wants to do that, or if you want to do that, Paul, but.
I would rather not, I think that would be here enough, Tim.
Okay, so, Tim, can you come and talk for just a couple minutes, talk about what computers we're putting in, what we're replacing the teacher stations with, so the board knows what we've chosen as the model of choice?
And it's 3,372 computers.
Yep, and if I know those guys right, I'm sure they have a unit price for if they want to go out and buy more at a later date, so that we're consistent.
It's also just a, at least a two-year project, so this is not all of this summer.
All right. This also is in your board packet as well, but it talks about replacing 3,372 computers as the actual.
This is B3.
Yes.
We're going to B3.
Over the next two years, these are essentially very similar to what we purchased for the replacement of the administrative computers throughout the district, which we did earlier, actually this past fall. They're an HP Elite Desktop 800G1 Small Form Factor computer with 8 gigs of RAM and 256 megabytes SATA hard drives, as well as a monitor with webcam and speaker bar, so that we can, we found that the speakers that come with the monitors in many cases are not loud enough in the classroom or for people to hear, so we did specify speaker bar to give us a little more volume in those areas. These eventually, the classroom machines will also be tied into the sound field, the audio enhancement systems in the classrooms, when we do that installation, so that will give them even more amplification throughout the classroom, which will be nice as well, and that'll also be connected to the projector in each classroom, and also tied in with the PA system in the district, so if they're listening to something through the speakers from the computer or whatever, an announcement comes over and automatically turns down the other audio, so that they can hear the PA announcements. We also are opting for an additional two-year extended warranty for a total of five years, that's one of the alternates that we chose, and I think that's about it, unless you've got other questions, or did we? And this is, obviously, as Randy said, the classroom teacher machines, the lab machines, as well as some of the machines that are in the LMCs.
So this is the big replacement component of the technology bondage. Obviously, we're doing a lot of infrastructure things, we're putting in, as you know, the short throw cameras, and we're getting other technology, but this is the big computer replacement component of the bondage.
Okay, great, thanks, then. So if you flip back to B2, that kind of gives you an idea of where the budget was and kind of how we came in, so the budget for this package was about 3.5 million dollars, where we came in just under 3.3 million, so we have a positive variance. Now, we're, again, projecting that we would hold 10% contingency for this package, so in total, we had a 3.85 million dollar budget, and we're right about 3.6, so we're to the good. And I'm sure Tim won't mind if I move that over to the construction side, right, Tim? So that's B2, Kim, Tim covered B3, and then B4 is really just, again, a bid tabulation of how those bids came in, so you'll see they're pretty tight, we had three bids all within about 17,000 over each other, which is, is pretty crazy, so, and then a couple off in outer space, which is usually the case. And again, those bids are here on site, if anybody wants to take a look at them.
Mark, I believe Liz may have had a question.
Yes.
If this is going to take two years, have we worked into it that we need to have the computer labs usable for online assessments?
Oh, yeah, yep. They've got a plan put together.
Yes, computer labs will be replaced during the summer, so we won't interrupt instruction.
Fantastic, thank you.
Are we, are any other questions at this point? Great, that takes us to C. C is for our environmental consultants, so it's not the actual asbestos abatement contractors that are doing the work, but it's the consulting firms that we hired last year. If you remember correctly, we put out, even though it's a professional service and we weren't obligated to, we put out a publicly issued RFP to go out and find out what environmental companies that are in the area were interested in, in working with us. The two that we ended up selecting were ETC Group and NOVA Environmental. Those two teams, we split up, NOVA ended up taking over the elementary schools, and then ETC was doing the middle schools and the high schools. They've both done a pretty good job for us, we've been happy with the work that they've done, so we're looking to extend their contracts out for the next year. We got budget numbers from them based on the scope of work, and we bid out the RFP originally, we didn't really know what the scope of work was, because until you go survey the building and, and test all the floor tile, and test the ceiling tile, and the glue, and everything, you don't really know necessarily what's hot and what's not. We gave them the information we did have, but we really didn't have an exact amount. Now, this year, we actually had them go survey the building and then give us a price, so I'm a little bit more confident that these numbers will hold than I was last year, so. We're basically looking at carrying 25,000 at Hayes and Roosevelt, 50 at Kennedy. Kennedy has some of the spray-on insulation, asbestos insulation, similar to what Coolidge had last year, which causes a lot more work for us as far as the abatement goes, and then gives us a lot less time on the construction side to get the building done, so that one we're carrying 50. And then Riley and Emerson are pretty clean, too, those we're carrying 25,000, so. All told, we're looking to adjust their contracts up by 100,000 for NOVA, and then 50,000 for ETC. So, again, we publicly bid this out, even though we weren't obligated to, but we wanted to be transparent about it. Now, technically, we could, we could have come back and probably awarded these guys a change order, but we wanted to bring it to the board and make you aware of what was going on, so that everybody was, you know, on the same page, so.
Paul, what's the differential in costs from last year to this year for this project?
Um, look, I think I have their total. So I think NOVA last year, we spent about 83,000 for the three buildings last year, and they're fairly similar in scope. I'm anticipating we'll be somewhere around there as well this year, but rather than have a separate contingency amount, they, they, these contracts are really time and material, so if the contractor takes three extra days to abate something, they have to stay three extra days and watch that be abated. So these are really, they're not really a lump sum contract, it's more of a time and material contract, so I've kind of, instead of carrying a separate contingency for it, I've kind of increased their budget numbers that they gave us by 10% or 15%. So, it's really pretty comparable for NOVA. For ETC, it's actually a little bit less than it was last year. Actually, actually, last year, they were at 46,000, and now we have 50, so it's pretty comparable. Last year was a little bit messier, because Frost had some of that spray-on insulation as well, so that project was pretty tough. And again, it backed us into a corner on some of the construction, but I think we should be in the same ballpark, I would say. And then we've obviously got Franklin, I was hoping to bring Franklin as well, but they haven't finished the survey there, and I didn't want to put a budget together without that survey information, so I should actually have that maybe on Friday, we would bring that to you in March, so. So there's a letter just kind of outlining that, the total of 150,000. C2 basically just shows you the three elementaries, which is NOVA Environmental, and then the other two buildings, Riley and Emerson, which are ETC, you'll see there's no dollars there for Franklin yet, because we didn't have them in, for a total of 150,000. Section 3 are just some letters from ETC and from NOVA, just kind of outlining what their budgets would be for the buildings. You'll see that the budget numbers that they have don't exactly match up with what I'm proposing, again, because I wanted to include some contingency in them in case things go a little bit longer, and again, it's not a lump sum amount, it's just a time and material type contract, so. So you'll see a NOVA, a letter from ETC and a letter from NOVA, and then Section 4 are the change orders, so if the board approves these, we would then just sign and execute these change orders, and then their contract would be amended. So I think this worked out pretty well, I mean, most of the vendors that we engaged, we wanted to only engage them for the first year to see how they did, to be honest, it gives them a little bit more incentive to give us better service, and I think, for the most part, that's worked very well. When we get into the next one, you'll see the same thing with Selinger, we only engaged them for 2014, wanted to make sure that they performed admirably, and then we'll reengage in them for the next year or two, so. So that's Section C, I don't know if there's any questions on that. That takes us to D, which is security, forgot about security. So same thing, last year, we put out a public RFP for security systems, access control systems, we ended up selecting Security Design, who's a local Livonia firm and had been working with the district for quite some time. That contract last year was a little bit, a little bit gray, because we hadn't really designed the security system completely, we weren't exactly sure how those front entrances would be configured, and the door access card readers would work, we weren't exactly sure how the security system was going to function, because we still had some meetings to have with the committee on that. And as we worked through that, we ended up finding some things we wanted to do a little bit differently, so we've tried to take all those changes into account this year, and have the scope nailed down tight up front, so I really don't expect this number to move very much, whereas last year, it did move a little bit. We also had just some hiccups between the security system and the architectural drawings as far as who was doing the door hardware, who was modifying the frames, who was bringing the power to the doors. I knew how I wanted it done, but it didn't quite get done that way, so this year, we've got that very clearly on the drawings, so it shouldn't be a problem. But we're recommending for the six buildings.
All of our lessons learned, right?
Yeah, we're trying.
We're trying on lessons learned meeting to get all this stuff nailed down for Phase 2.
Yep. I'm sure we'll have it figured out by the very last year.
We'll be perfect.
Yeah, we'll be perfect. So, and this year, we have not five buildings, but this does include Franklin, which is a bigger building, so, you know, there's more devices, more motion detectors, more door contacts, et cetera. So we're recommending a lump sum contract, which would be a change order for Security Design of 84,265 for the six buildings, and then carrying a contingency of 16,853 for a total of 101,118. So that's kind of the cover letter, and you'll see, D2 kind of talks through the budget. We're carrying about 100,000 for those projects, and then 20 for contingency, so we're to the good by about 18,000. Then D3 is just a letter from Security Design and kind of all the detail, well, it looks like the detail's in 4, but you'll see a page in D4 that has a spreadsheet that's all highlighted up in yellow. That's all the detail as far as, you know, how many control panels, and keypads, and motion detectors, and door contacts, I made them give me every last little detail of what they were doing, went back and checked it against the unit prices they gave us last year to make sure it was consistent, and to make sure that we had it tied in with the architectural scope, so there was no overlap, so, and that comes down to that 84,000 number you'll see, so. And again, this would just be a change order to their existing contract.
I have one more question.
Yep.
Paul, at what point do we figure out who's going to monitor the security systems? Have we, I don't remember talking about that.
Yep, so when we put out the RFP last year, we had a separate line item for monitoring services, and we got proposals from, I think, four firms, and I think they all gave us monitoring prices as well. The price that we got from Security Design was actually less than you were paying before, not by a lot, but by a few dollars, because we were bidding it out for the entire district for, basically for five years, so we were able to take advantage of that lower cost. So Security Design is also doing the monitoring. So that's D3, and then D4 is just the change order with the backup. So again, we already have these guys under contract, we're just being overly transparent to let you know exactly what's going on again for 2015, so. If there's no questions, that takes us to E, which is the commissioning. So again, we hired, we put out a public RFP again, even though it was a professional service, for commissioning services last year, and I think we got seven or eight different proposals from firms all over the state, and actually, some of the, some out of the state. We ended up hiring Selinger Associates, who is a local Livonia firm, which, again, we're happy to see. They did the commissioning on the first five buildings last year, I think that went fairly well, we did have a few hiccups here and there, mostly due to the air and water balances on the systems. Even though we replaced a lot of the mechanical units, we didn't really mess with the boilers and the pumps, but when you go replace all the units downstream, it changes the flow rates that the pump needs to put out, and we kind of worked through that more in the fall than I would have liked, we should have been more ahead of that. So we had some issues where we had to go back and put some bypass loops in, we had to do some rebalancing, air balance and water balancing, and we had to work through that a little bit longer into the, into the fall than, again, than I would have liked, so. I think the commissioning went well, you know, it did help to have a third party out there to make sure that things were installed the way they were supposed to be. We did find a lot of things that weren't done correctly, you know, not necessarily through anybody's fault, but just misinterpretations, or things that get piped backwards once in a while, so I think it was definitely a worthy exercise, and, you know, it's, it's a big cost to do a third-party commissioning, but I think it's well worth it. We have been having some feedback here and there from staff, most of it's just them getting used to the new system, I think. We've had a couple recurring problems that we're working with manufacturers on for, like a specific rooftop unit or something like that that's not functioning, but all in all, I think it's been, after the initial couple first weeks when the boilers turned on, I think it's, it's settled down a little bit, I hope, so. So they competitively bid last year, and were considerably lower than everybody else that had proposed, which is one of the reasons we selected them. This year, if you look at their fee on a percentage basis, or on a square foot basis, This year, if you look at their fee on a percentage basis or on a square foot basis, their number actually came down a little bit, which makes it even better. Part of that is because we've been through a year, they have all the forms set up, they have all the templates set up, they know the engineers a little bit better now, so they understand what they're trying to do with the systems. And they're just a little bit more comfortable, so they were able to reduce their costs a little bit. We're also duplicating some effort between the CMs and the commissioning agent with collecting all the warranties and all the operation and maintenance manuals and things like that, so we've kind of cut out that duplication of effort, so that brought their number down a little bit, so. So we're proposing that we award them a contract for a hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars, and then we're proposing to carry twenty-one thousand, one hundred in contingency for a total of one-twenty-six, six hundred. And if you look at E2, that kind of gives you the budget and contingency budget, and shows that we're about seventeen thousand dollars to the good, again. E3 is just a proposal from Selinger, kind of details the scope of what they're doing. Again, last year we did five buildings, this year we're doing five plus Franklin, so the scope's a little bit more. I did want to make sure that they understood we're putting a new addition on Franklin and, you know, doing a little bit more work on that building than they would know from the original floor plan I gave them, so we made sure that that was clear. So I think we're, we're in good shape as far as that goes. And then E4 is just the change order to their contract, so. Again, we thought it was important to bring all these back to the board. You know, last year, again, we put out those RFPs, we engaged everybody for one year, wanted to make sure that they did a good job, and before we extended them, and I think, in the case of these, these last three sections here, the last four contractors, the vendors, I think they've done a great job, so we're happy to keep them on.
So we owe you that one corrected page, which we'll get out in the packet tomorrow.
Okay.
And then, this will get to be our documentation for Monday night as we go through the actual approval process.
I have a question, Paul, on, on the commissioning. Since Franklin is going to be a two-year project, is their bid from Selinger good for just the first year, and then they'll rebid the second year?
No, it's good for the whole Franklin.
For the whole thing, okay.
Yep, which does bring up a good point, because that's going to be a tricky one to commission, because you've got, you know, the old steam boiler system and heat exchangers, and how do you do half of that, and then, you know, come back the second year and do the other half, and the balancing aspect of that, so I let them know what they were in for, and they were confident in their numbers.
Okay.
So this is the first 2015 award recommendation we're bringing. We will be back again on March 2nd with the three elementary schools, Hays, Kennedy, and Roosevelt, along with some other odds and ends, the asbestos bids that are all out on the street right now. I don't remember what else is on our spreadsheet, but there's a whole other list of things that we'll be bringing back to you. And then the big one, the 23rd of March is Franklin, along with some other pieces and parts, so. I think all told, we're about fifty-two or fifty-three million dollars worth of rewards this year, so. Whereas last year, we were just kind of getting our feet underneath us and making sure we didn't bite off more than we could chew, this year we're, we're going at it with, you know, full gusto, so I think we're, I think we're ready to go, so. I do have some news, too, on Hays, Kennedy, and Roosevelt. Those bids did come in today. Prelimarily, we look like we're in pretty good shape, if you don't take any of the alternates, and if nobody drops out, which somebody will drop out, because somebody made a mistake, but we're looking like we're going to come in under budget on those, so.
Okay.
Tentatively, so we'll see how we come in in the next couple of weeks, so.
From a, a big-picture standpoint, we're pretty pleased with where the bids came in. As, as Paul said, our estimates were a little bit tighter this year because we had a year under our belt. I would highlight, though, that the construction market is getting tougher out there, and so there's more work with Detroit rebounding, which is a good thing. There's more work for quality contractors to be done, and so that's driving up the prices of our type of work. And so we're pleased to be into year two here. As you know, the, the first few years will get us a good portion of the way along in our bond issue, but we're pleased that we're about where we had hoped to be with the buds, with the bids this time, and of course, in better shape last year. But it certainly is causing us to watch very closely these budgets as we move forward. As Paul said, there's a couple of alternates we really, really want to do badly, and it makes sense that we do them now, but we really need to monitor this, monitor our overall budgets as we move forward, so we're hoping that we'll, we'll come to be able to bring some of those back, but the market's getting tougher, the prices are going up, and, you know, we would anticipate that again next year when we get re, ready for round three, which, you know, does, I mean, basically, when round three's done, we're done with our elementary, middle schools, and five, six schools, so. And so those are the challenges that we're facing, and, and, but having said that, a lot better than if we were coming to you and saying, you know, we're a million and a half short because of the construction market right now, even though we had a great year last year, if you remember, several million to the good.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This goes on our February 9th voting.
Correct.
Yes.
Again, please give to Lisa Paul call, if you had a chance, look at it closer, and if you have any questions. It is pretty straightforward, but it's a lot of information, so we'll be happy to show you anything that you need or get you anything, any questions that you have.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All righty. As we said, we'll be doing some jumping around. The next item that we will be addressing is the Finance Committee, number 3C, and Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Item 3C will be the discussion on limited schools of choice for 2016, 2017.
Andrea's handing out some detailed information for you. Just a little bit of background before I turn it over to Andrea to provide the details. As you know, we did limited schools of choice in our early grades this year for the first time, and, and as we talked about in our study session last week, we believe it was very successful. We think we very easily acclimated those additional students into our school district, and they're really turning out to be a, a plus for our, our, our school system. And so, we do have a year under our belt, and, and we have positive results in regards to our first year of implementation. Secondly, I would highlight that, as you know, we've just spent a lot of time with our community, talked to all over three hundred people in regards to what they would like to see as we address our budget issues, and as I shared with you in our packet, we're in the process of finalizing, summarizing all the feedback that we received, and we received lots and lots of comments and, and really good feedback, but by and large, the trends that we saw were support from the community for revenue enhancement ideas as opposed to program reduction ideas. That's, that's the main theme that came out of it, and one of the revenue enhancement ideas that we received, a variety of comments of support for, was a limited schools of choice program, and so that's additional information. Those two particular pieces, I think, are important pieces of information, and certainly led us to bring this particular recommendation forward to the Board of Education for next year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea to give the background, and we'll answer questions.
Thanks, Randy. The first staple packet that you have should look pretty similar. It's the information that I shared with you last year, just updated with a couple of different pieces with regard to the state guidelines for doing 105 or 105C schools of choice. So as you know, we currently participate in 105C schools of choice, not only for the students we have at the K6 level that we brought in this year, but also for our ACAT, MECAT, and IB programs. So the difference with that is, they either, 105 comes just from out of district but within Wayne County, and 105C are all counties contiguous to Wayne County, and I have those listed here. And just a couple of reminders about the, the key guidelines that we have to follow. If you are going to open up for limited schools of choice as opposed to unlimited, unlimited enrollment district, you must specify some of those factors, either the schools that will accept those students, the grades, or the programs. You don't have to have all of those identified, so in our case, we will identify the grades and how many students. We will also indicate that the, that not all schools may have openings depending on their enrollment for next year. An example of programs is the ACAT program. We have a specific program that we offer, and then we have specific criteria that people must meet. Must provide notice to the general public, so we do that through the Observer and Eccentric Papers. We also will have all that information on our website should the board choose to move forward. And we would be looking at, as we did last year, a thirty-day notification period. The smallest window you can have is fifteen, and the largest is thirty. A question that will often get asked, and I know was asked in some of the forum discussions, was, you know, what are the criteria? And as I have stated in here, you cannot discriminate based on abilities, accomplishments, or talents, or any disabilities that a child may possess, unless you have specific requirements for that program for any child, as with the ACAT or the MECAT program. Last year, the second to the last bullet on that page refers to a lottery, so the state law requires that if we have more students than we have spots available at a grade level, you must have a random draw lottery, and there's a process to follow. So we had to do that last year for all but one of our grade levels, and so we have a procedure that we would recommend for that as well. And then, once a student is approved for entry, they will remain a student through graduation unless they select to have a break in enrollment, which means they choose to go to another school for a semester or a year, they would not be able to come back and complete, unless we were open to schools of choice and they were chosen to do that. Okay? So otherwise, they don't have to re-up each year. We've had that question from some of our current families, asking about, you know, is the board planning to approve any school of choice for next year? So for a couple of them, there was some confusion on whether or not they had to reapply or whether they could continue, so we've clarified that for our families. Obviously, we don't provide transportation to non-resident students, and the tuition is, the enrolling district receives the lesser of the foundation allowance between the students' resident district and the enrolling district. So if your foundation allowance is lower than the district from which they are coming, then we would receive our own. If theirs is lower, then we would receive that foundation allowance. So I've attached here a number of different pieces, similar to what we used last year, about the application guidelines and some website information we would like to put out should you choose to move forward next week. Our recommendation for next year looks a little bit different than last year, and we would be looking to focus in on the early elementary grades, so we would be recommending opening twenty spots at the kindergarten level. That was by far the most requested and most applied-for set of openings last year. I believe we had about thirty-six applications for our ten spots last year at kindergarten, so we'd be looking to open twenty spots at kindergarten, ten spots at first grade, ten spots at second grade, five at third, and five at fourth. And one of the reasons why we chose to go a bit past the K2 this year, where we had initially thought we would focus, is because we know we have about a hundred and twenty students in the district between ACAT and IB and School of Choice, who potentially may have siblings that would be interested in attending Livonia Public Schools as well. And we know that for a couple of reasons. One, we had multiple members of a family apply last year, and in most cases, only one student was able to come in through the lottery. Another reason we know that is because last week, the district sent out a survey to current School of Choice families, asking them if they had elementary-age children, and if they did, would they be interested in having those children attend? Would they like more information if the board chooses to go forward? So we've just begun to get some of those responses. They are primarily focused on the K1 level right now with positive responses. I would say about three-quarters of them have indicated they don't have other elementary-age children, but again, we only have about a thirty percent response rate at this point in time. So that, those spots at third and fourth would allow us to take in siblings at those grade levels, or if not, disperse those students across the, you know, thirty-three or thirty-four grades, classes we have at that grade level. So it would be a relatively very, very minor impact, but allow us some flexibility. So then, the documents that are supporting with that, the first page is information that we would include on the website and also as part of the information packet. It clearly delineates, which has been required by law, where the openings are, when is the application period, where do they return the application packet, it was, would there be a lottery? If so, when will that be held? We've set all of those dates on here, and we've also set the dates for when we would notify families of acceptance, when they would receive school placement, and when the lottery would be held. Then there is an FAQ, just for, for their information and yours as well, and then there's the guideline sheet, which is a little bit more detailed about the applications, and we, it worked very well. We were, think very clear and well-defined at the outset last year, and we really had no issues at all with regard to applications, or deadlines, or incomplete packets and things, so we, I think we had all of the information that folks were looking for, and they were able to get us everything that they needed to be included in that, for that consideration. And then, just a reminder, the reason, I, I might not have mentioned this, but when I spoke about siblings, it's just a reminder that by law, they are given preference. So if we have openings that we are offering at that grade level, they would not become part of the lottery, they would automatically be accepted if they have a sibling currently attending through 105C. And then the last page is just the updated application, and the primary difference on this, beyond the modification of the dates, is about a third to a half of the way down, when it asks if it has a sibling, if the, if the child has a sibling attending LPS, and then if yes, which program. We added the Schools of Choice General Education piece as the other option, because we know that comprises about fifty-seven of those kids. So those are the primary materials that make up the packet. We have some additional information about Livonia Public Schools and so on that we would include in there as well, and that will be available on the website, but those are the primary pieces, and that is the recommendation we'd like to bring for you next week for your consideration.
So just taking a, a step back, Andrea's provided you a lot of the information and timelines that we'll utilize, which is internally what we need to do, and again, as she mentioned, much of it is the same process that we went through last year. We are trying to get a jump on it a bit this year as it relates to providing information and getting the word out. We do have a lot of phone calls that we're receiving right now about our ACAT program and IB program and et cetera, so there is interest, again, from people to apply for these openings. And so, from a big-picture standpoint, really the question in front of you is, do we want to go ahead with this recommendation, as we've outlined it, to accept fifty students, which would be twenty kindergarten, ten at the first, ten at the second, five at the third, five at the fourth? Are we okay with continuing to open up if there are empty seats in our IB? Well, actually, we, the board's already approved that particular piece of it, so those specialized programs, we'll continue to move forward with if there are empty seats. And from a big-picture standpoint, again, we're bringing this recommendation for, to you because of two things. Number one, the positive experience we had with limited schools of choice of sixty seats last year, and number two, the positive feedback that we received through our community forums. Not to make it known that that was a hundred percent approval of everybody that came, there's no one item that received a hundred percent approval or disapproval, that's always the way it's going to be, but generally speaking, people were supportive of revenue enhancement ideas as opposed to program reductions, and, and so that's another reason we're so comfortable bringing this forward to you in February this year. So that's the question that's in front of you, we'd be happy to answer. Any questions that you have, and certainly facilitate any conversation you want to have about this.
And I can mention timeline, you, you had just, you had just hit on that, but we'd be accelerating the timeline by about two months, and we would be having our window open, I'm not sure if I mentioned it specifically, from May second, or from March 2nd until March 31st, in which case, we feel we will capture families at, at the height of when they're looking at, at choice options. Last year, if you recall, we still received a, a good response, but we were in the late May, mid to late May area, which was a little late compared to districts around us, and so we think that this, by the number of calls we're getting, as Dr. Leopold said, on ACAT and IB, we are also getting calls daily, multiple calls daily, as to whether or not we will be opening any seats for School of Choice. And so, this is certainly something that families are, are interested in and are looking at at this time, and so I think that will be of advantage to the district as well, because then we can utilize that information in budget planning and in staffing and, and so on a little more smoothly this year.
Tammy?
Mrs. Oakworth.
Yes.
In regards to siblings coming in.
Yes.
Are siblings matched to the same school, or they're sent out, like, you could have somebody, one sibling in Franklin's Triad and one in Churchill's Triad, or will they be placed in the same building?
We would certainly, with the exception of Webster, be looking to place them in the same school if, if obviously they're at that same level, and if not, within the same track, meaning if they were at a lower elementary or an upper elementary or middle school.
They'd be in the same Triad.
So that the family is within the same track, yes. And we did that this year where we did have a couple of those- And we did that this year, where we did have a couple of those cases.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes. I appreciate your explanation, and I'm just going to reiterate it again so the public understands, because this was something that came up extensively in the forum, the difference between limited schools of choice and open schools of choice.
Yes.
That if the board does choose to go ahead and approve this, it is not an open-door policy where we're taking any students who choose to come. But it is very, very limited. And I recognize I'm repeating you, but I'm just hoping that the public understands, this is on a very limited basis. One quick thing that I noticed, the application lists, in the upper-right corner, lists up through a checkoff box for fifth or sixth grade. I assume that's just a carryover from last year that would be?
Yes, we'll need to make that adjustment.
Okay. Okay, because that's not part of the proposal right now?
No.
And then, just something that crossed my mind, as we were talking about students being able to stay in the district, once they come in, they'll stay in through graduation if they do so consistently.
Yes.
If that family moves into Livonia Public Schools at some point during that child's school career, they would no longer be considered as a Schools of Choice student, correct?
Essentially, yes, that'd be correct. They would be considered a resident student.
Okay, which would make a difference in funding. And if they were at a low enough grade, would it make a difference in opening up another spot for that Schools of Choice student? Actually, now that I say that, it probably wouldn't, because we're looking at number that would come in, in any one given year. Like, the 60 we brought in last year are not counted in the 50. I just answered my own question, you can ignore that.
Okay.
Okay, never mind. But anyway, if they did, if family did move into Livonia, they would, our, the only difference it would make then would be in our funding that we received from the state, because it would no longer, if they were coming in from a district that had a lower funding, it would adjust up to the Livonia Public Schools funding.
That's correct. It wouldn't open up a spot, so to speak, unless it were still within the window of enrollment, which is the first Friday of the first full week of school. And so if it's beyond that, you would not be able to bring in an additional student to take that spot.
Right, okay. All righty. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. The 50 openings for the limited schools of choice, is that in addition to any openings in the special programs like A-CAT and M-A-CAT?
It is, yes. And in April, Dr. Leopold will receive a memo from me, which will be shared with the Board of Education regarding any openings available in the A-CAT program. We do that after we have done all of the testing for LPS students and have received acceptance information from them. Then we will determine how many openings there are over and above our own students who have already been taken care of, so to speak. And so you'll receive a more detailed update on which families will be having openings, meaning that's their term for the grade level clusters, and also how many, if any, at those family levels.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Banfield?
Can you just give me a couple of numbers, if you have them off the top of your head? How many kindergarten classrooms do we have this year?
33.
And what is the max number of kindergarten students per classroom? The state max?
Well, we use, okay, so there's a couple of different numbers. For staffing, we use a max of 26.
Okay.
In the district, the contract actually allows for 30.
Okay.
Previously, we used a hard cap of 28 before we overflowed, and we did some internal adjustments and made that 26.
Okay.
And I don't know of a specific cap that the state has.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Oakworth. You're welcome.
So we're prepared to put this on the agenda for next Monday?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis and Mrs. Oakworth. Again, keeping with our jumping-around theme tonight, we will, the next item we will address is item 5A, and we will be hearing from Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Tonight, we will be having a discussion on a board resolution on the May 5 ballot proposal. And Dr. Leopold's going to have, lead the discussion on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. We have often in the past been leaders and taken position on a variety of state or local issues that impact education. And as you all know, there is a significant proposal that's in front of the Michigan citizens across the state of Michigan today, that does impact education. Just as a brief summary of what occurred in December, our state legislature, as they were looking for a resolution to try to impact and improve the road conditions in and across the state of Michigan, decided to put together a ballot proposal that would address the needs, the need of investment into our roads across the state. As part of that proposal, what they, what they did is identified certain sales taxes that are currently collected on motor vehicle fuel, and said that those dollars would be utilized for purely road construction. They also identified some additional motor vehicle fuel tax that will be added, I think it was in the neighborhood of 15 to 19 cents per gallon, that would be added, that would be set aside purely for road improvements. And so, when that happened, more specifically, the first piece, when they took the sales tax on motor vehicle fuel and set it aside, it actually created a hole in the state school aid fund to fund schools, because a portion of sales tax goes to the school aid fund to fund local public schools. And so, what they did as part of the proposal to address that, and to address the fact that school funding has been stagnant for some time in the state of Michigan, as we well know, is that they proposed to increase the overall sales tax in the state of Michigan from 6 cents to 7 cents. And by doing that, it took care of the dollars that were going to be set aside for the road construction, so there would be appropriate dollars set aside for road construction, and actually improved the overall lot for local schools to the tune of about $300 million in the school aid fund. This equates to about $200 per student, if it was allocated equally across all school districts. Just to put that in perspective, a $200 per student increase is about a 2.5% increase for our school district. And so this is not a windfall of a 10% or a 15% increase in our overall funding. This is a 2.5% increase, which is probably around the rate of inflation, that we and other school districts would receive. Having said that, as you know, we have not received a $200 per student increase in many, many years. You can probably go back to prior to 2000, year 2000, since we've received a $200 per student increase in our funding. And so, and so it has a significant impact on school districts. In addition, one of the things that they did, as it relates to school funding in this proposal, was to say that certain dollars that are currently paid for out of the school aid fund for higher education would no longer be paid out of the school aid fund constitutionally. And you'll recall, four years ago, when the state had budget issues, and they used the school aid fund, which had historically been used for K-12 purposes, and they took the higher ed budget and the community college budget out of the K-12 budget, that was a big sore point for school districts, K-12 school districts across the state of Michigan, a very big sore point. And so, as part of this proposal, they look at resolving a portion of that issue by taking out the higher ed piece, which again, provides more dollars for K-12 students across the state of Michigan. And so certainly, while we recognize the sacrifice that this is for taxpayers across the state of Michigan, when polls have been done in regards to what the priorities are from a budget standpoint in Michigan, poll after poll after poll have said, K-12 schools and the roads are high, high priorities for investment. And so, and so as we look at this issue, as it relates to the impact on our school district, it's significant. And certainly, as you know, we've had a lot of budget discussions, and we've involved the community in that over the last couple of, a couple of weeks, or really the last couple of months. And we certainly heard it in our forums, too, about, you know, what's going on with funding across the state and what can be done. We would recommend that the Board of Education consider approving a resolution that would support the sales tax proposal that is before the Michigan voters on May 5th. We certainly recognize that it's not perfect. There are people that have taken pieces of the overall package that's been put together and have been critical of it, which is part and parcel of the entire process that, that we're engaging in right now. That's the appropriate debate that should be happening amongst citizens across the state of Michigan. But the bottom line is, this is the proposal that's been worked out, and it's the one thing we have on the table that can not provide additional funds, but restore some of the funding that we've lost in the last five years. And so, and so it's outlined in the, in the resolution. I did get a chance to send you a copy of what we had drafted up. We did highlight in there clearly, based on board feedback, that we wanted to say that we expect that the legislature will allocate funds, so all districts receive this additional $200 per pupil. As you know, in the past, we've been concerned when some of the dollars haven't been very equitably distributed across school districts, especially when we haven't gotten back all the dollars that we've lost in the past many years. And so that's, I know, an important point, as board members have talked about this, if we're going to be asking citizens across the state to put more dollars in, and we know our community is a big donor when it comes to any kind of tax, that we get our fair share back. And so, we recognize that in the resolution. We also recognize in the resolution that this is a sacrifice by citizens. But it does recognize the two areas that people have looked at, that people believe, if we're going to invest in Michigan, here are the areas that we ought to invest in. And so it's certainly consistent with that kind of feedback that has, that we've heard about as poll after poll's been done across the state of Michigan. So that's really what this resolution reflects. And I'll be happy to open it up to any comments as it relates to the board taking a position on this.
Any questions?
I just have one quick question. First off, I'm thrilled that we're going to take a stand on it. I think it's vital, if we are advocating for public education, I think that this is the best thing, while it may not be perfect. In my opinion, it's the best thing we've seen in a very long time. So I'm very happy that we're going to be making a public statement in support of it, or at least are considering doing so. The, one slight wording change that I would suggest, in the second, second whereas, reads "whereas these challenges today have resulted in circumstances that directly and negatively affect our children's education, et cetera," I would suggest that we use a different word than "today," because it, to me, it implies that it's a, an immediate situation that just happened recently, and it really, in my opinion, is a very ongoing situation. I would suggest that we put "to date" or something else that implies a longer period of time that this has been going on, as opposed to just an immediate situation today.
Just take "today" out.
Take it out.
We could take "today" out. That works, that works, too.
Okay. So it reads, "Whereas Michigan Public Schools continue to face difficult economic and budget challenges, and whereas these challenges have resulted in circumstances that directly and negatively affect our children's education, learning ability, et cetera." That's the way that would read.
That works for me.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm. Mrs. McDonald?
Oh, thank, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So before I excuse myself, I, for those who weren't listening before, unfortunately, being on a different day, it's actually not November 2nd, we, or February 2nd, I have to run out here. But I want to thank you for your leadership on this. I think there's a lot of information about the ballot proposal, and people are very unsure about it. So I think your leadership in educating the public on what this will do for our school district is very important, and you have my full support.
Thank you.
This is Laura.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Just echoing my words, I agree with what my two colleagues have said, and Randy, I think this is well-written. It covers everything that we have talked about before in our committee, and it is very clear to the public. I would suggest, if we weren't going to do it, that we read the resolution at our regular meeting next week.
That's a good idea. You're talking about an addition to signing it, and?
Yeah, I think it should be read.
As opposed to just approving the motion, that we actually read the resolution.
And maybe who makes the motion could read it.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Dr. Leopold, am I to understand that under the proposal, that universities would be excluded, but community colleges would be included in the school aid fund?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just wondering if, in the, the six whereas, where we talk about the $300 million and the $200 per student?
Mm-hmm.
And we talk about higher education, I'm wondering if we shouldn't be more specific, so that the, if someone just reads us and sees restrict the use in higher education, they might, they might presume that it includes both community colleges and universities as being excluded?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be perhaps a little clearer?
Yes. Let me, let me come up with wording for that and put that in there.
Okay.
Those technical schools are included in it also, correct?
Only if they receive funding through the school aid bill. So I'm not sure if they receive funding through the school aid bill or not.
I thought I read something on that, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, so.
I could check into that, to make, so I can clarify that. And I think that's an important piece, because that is a key component of this whole piece that makes it attractive. And so, we want people to understand. Maybe even adding a little bit of language about what happened four years ago in there.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McDonald.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right. Ms. Johnson?
Okay, we'll make those changes, and we'll be prepared to have that resolution next Monday.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. The next item that we will be having before us goes back to building in sight, item 2C, and we will hear from Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. As you all know, we had a discussion and a presentation from Bill Bowman, from Great Northern Consulting Group at our last study session. I, for one, thought it was excellent, very, very informative. And we're going to continue that discussion a little more this evening, and Dr. Leopold will lead us in that discussion.
Yes. As Mr. Johnson mentioned, we were fortunate enough to get Mr. Bowman to come in to our study session last week and cover in some great detail. While somewhat painful to hear about every drainpipe and easements.
That's exciting.
And a handful of pieces of property was, I think everybody agreed afterwards, was very, very informative. I think we've got in a good person who really knows how to evaluate property and what their best use might be. The concept of these parcels is not new. Actually, we've been talking about this for the last two or three years at different times. And what we see happening now is the market's starting to turn to where there is more interest in regards to vacant parcels. And so, the five parcels that we asked him to take a look at for us were parcels that we've identified as not needing into the future. As you know, our board policy basically says that we, by and large, we discourage the sale of our existing property, because we want to make sure that not only now, but into the future, we're protected as it relates to the needs that the school district may have. But we've got a significant number of vacant parcels that we just can't see potential need for. And so, the five parcels were the Washington property, the Ninkin Mills property, the Hicks Road property well south of Johnson that people don't even know we own, that backs up to the Wayne Park system, also a 10-acre parcel on Ann Arbor Trail across from the Skill Center that many people don't know that we even own, along with the old Perrinville site where the current one-room schoolhouse is on the corner of Farmington Road and Ann Arbor Trail. And so again, this is nothing new. We've talked about these different parcels on and off for the past several years. And we've talked about considering the sale of that to improve our lot financially in the school district. I would highlight that, as I mentioned with the Schools of Choice agenda item a little bit earlier, that in our community forums, again, revenue enhancement ideas were high priorities amongst citizens, as opposed to reductions in programs. And so, one of the items that was recognized pretty regularly was the consideration for selling property if the board didn't see a use for it. And so certainly, this And so, certainly, this, this kind of activity is something that is supported, or at least was supported by the over 300 people that came to the community sessions. And so, what we'd like to do is, with those particular five pieces, and as you know, we have a lot more than just those five pieces in our school district, but we're starting out with those particular five, and my suggestion to the board is that we look at that over a multiple-year period of time. And so, we look at potentially, starting right now, looking at two pieces of the property, and then next year, if we're able to successfully move these two particular pieces of property, we look at some of the other property, and then even into maybe a third year, these particular five pieces. Not that we can't change our game plan as we move forward, but at least from a starting point, that would be our recommendation to you, that we, that we do that. And from an ease of development and the logistics of highest and best use, it's pretty apparent to us that the Washington property and the Ninkin Mills property are the two properties that make the most sense right now. Actually, the Perrinville property made a lot of sense to us also, but Lisa reminded me that the, while we have an agreement on the one-room schoolhouse, it's still there, and they haven't moved it yet, and so, it's hard to develop a piece of property where we haven't moved, we haven't moved the one-room schoolhouse, so that seemed to make more sense for something that we look at down the road. And so, it's our recommendation that we go ahead, and Mr. Bowman had the opportunity to share with you his expertise in regards to helping a lot of school districts across the state of Michigan do land utilization studies and, and help them when they've looked at potentially selling property. What we'd like to do is to continue to use him to help finalize the use for those two particular pieces of property, and then help us market the properties. As you know, our board policy says that we cannot hire someone under commission to do that, and the board purposely did that years ago, because we didn't want to utilize someone who's just going to come in and be more interested in what they're going to get out of it, as opposed to the school district. So, the person that we've utilized that made the presentation last week is sort of like our Plant Moran Cressa type of person, that's our person looking out for our interests solely, and would just charge a flat fee for that. So, I'll have Lisa cover those pieces, but our recommendation is just to start with those two particular properties and begin marketing those, so we can look at generating revenue. And then, I'll talk a second about what we may have to do policy-wise, that would, would address what we'd use the proceeds for. So, with that, Lisa, if you can just cover what his, what his cost would be.
Sure. My part's easy. I asked Mr. Bowman to send us, he had originally sent us a scope of work as if we were going to do five or six pieces of property, so I said if we're just going to do, and he had different varying amounts depending on actually, you know, if we're going to do per parcel or in aggregate, so we're ending up kind of in between there, so asking him to price it out for the two properties. And for this next phase that Dr. Leepa talked about, basically, which is getting all the paperwork we need together, he's calling that the due diligence to get it prepared to market, those two pieces and marketing it, you know, putting out the RFP, and actually working through the process of getting it sold for us would be $30,000 for those two properties, or for two properties, which is, you know, really within what he had said. He had originally said if we did individually, it'd be about $15,000 per property, and this is coming in at 13, 13 to 14, so, that's right where he said it would be. So, what we would have, if we, I'll go ahead, but if we move forward, that's what we would include in our estimate for approval from the board for next week, if we move forward.
Ms. McDonald?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Dr. Leepa in Missabie, I know when he brought the presentation to us, he did do a very thrilled job, but what I would like to see the board do, and based on his recommendations, is to do the, the topographical surveys and get the title worked out before we put anything on the market.
That would happen.
That would be part of that due diligence.
Okay. Because there's some holes in, based on the parcel numbers, and based on what the acreage says in the, in the...
Yeah. And the topographical...
Tax holes and such, it's not equal, so that's why we need to make sure that we do that.
Yeah, we definitely will. That's part of that due diligence piece, but the actual topographic surveys, those will be separate, we'll actually engage, he'll make some recommendations, get some quotes for us, and then we'll engage the surveyors, and that will be a separate 7,500 to, well, probably around $7,000 to $8,000 for those surveys. So, he's getting quotes right now for that.
So, that's step one in the process. Obviously, that's under the bid limit for board approval, and since this contract of service here, we're technically not required to approve it anyways, but we certainly want to make sure that we have a direction that we're moving in, and that would be, I lean first, doing the topographical surveys before any, any marketing was done.
Now, Ninkin Mills is attached to the Western Wayne Skill Center, it's right next to it, right?
Right next to it, yes.
So, it's all on the same property. So, maybe that explains why the Westland equates that as 26 acres for that parcel, because it has one parcel ID number. So, you know, I think we just need to make sure that everything is where it should be versus not.
Absolutely. And we can make it clear in the motion that move that the Board of Education approve the school district in first doing topographical surveys to identify the specific properties and, and its values and so on, and from there, then would begin the process of marketing the properties for sale. Remember that, that just allows us to go out and market the properties. If there are any offers that come in from that, or if we do RFPs or whatever, those things would be come in, they would be evaluated, and we'd have to bring those back to you. And so, there's no approval to do anything at this point in time, only to get the studies done and then start to market the properties. That's all you'd be approving.
And then, the title work on top of it?
Yes, that's part of the, that's part of the survey work.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've done the title work on Washington, and I'd have to check on Ninkin Mills, but we've done the title work on Washington already.
But those pieces would have to come before any kind of recommendation to sell property.
To make sure that everybody is clear, even when we get the RFPs, we're not bound by the RFPs to sell the property.
Correct.
Just so everybody understands that.
Yeah. Yeah, if we look at and say, you know, this isn't, this doesn't make sense for whatever reason, then we absolutely have the right to reject any, any proposals.
And that's how they will be put out, in that, in that name.
Yeah.
Mrs. Johnson?
I would like to specify that the topogra, topographical surveys include mineral surveys. I know that oil has been found in some properties in Livonia, and it has been quite a substantial source of income. So, if we do in fact discover that there's a possibility of oil, that we have the opportunity to investigate that as an income source, an ongoing income source, as opposed to selling the property. Very good point there.
One of the, one of the ways you can do that is in a reservation of those rights in a deed, even if you, even if you don't do the topographical, and you have some suspicion that there is some mineral or some other precious commodity under there, you can always reserve the subsurface rights. You can partition them from the, the surface rights in a, in a deed.
And it may be that the city's already investigated that, they did go over quite a bit of our, of the property within Livonia, so maybe working in coordination with the city.
So, well, those are definitely points that we'll run by Mr. Bowman, to say, how do you do this, you know, as a part of the topographical survey, is it not? Do we need to do it separate? Have you, I'm sure he's, as you, as, one thing we got out of him last week is he's very experienced, and so, I'm sure he'll be able to give us some guidance as it relates to that. That's a good suggestion. And whether it's putting the reservation of rights in there, or doing some type of survey, we'll come back with his suggestion on that. Good point.
President Burton?
Yes, one thing that, that I know I learned last week, and the public may be interested to know too, if we do get to the point of bids coming in, the board has a right to look at not only the dollars being offered, but the, the use being suggested, so we can make sure that it's a good fit, not only financially for Livonia Public Schools, but it's a good fit for our community, with what their, what their proposed use of that land is. I know I felt a lot better about it, knowing that we actually do have some, some input on that.
Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. And he's also going to investigate further the TurboTax abatement plan that he said that was a possibility on some of these properties, which might enhance the values, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, this is good for Monday?
Yes, I'll make those questions based on the feedback from all of you. We'll, we'll make sure to clarify in the motion what we want to have happen, and...
Go ahead.
No, I'd be prepared to move ahead.
That's all right. I do just have one other question or suggestion for all of us, that maybe what we should look at is at least the topographical surveys on all the properties, because that piece of property that's across the road from the Skill Center doesn't show up on the tax rolls anywhere, even though he gave us a property ID number, but the property ID number maps over by which school was it?
Without question, I mean, right now...
I'm just saying, we need to show up and make sure that...
Absolutely, yeah. I wouldn't want to spend a ton of time on there right now, if we're not prepared to bring a recommendation until the future on that. And it could be, you know, it could be a year before we come back and discuss that, but at that point in time, absolutely, we would want to do that topless survey, on any, on any property that we would be considering in the next several years. So, yes, we would do that.
Okay, we're ready. We'll do that Monday.
Okay.
Everybody agree?
We're good.
All right, that concludes our discussion of item 2C.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next item that we will be addressing is under Finance Committee, under Mrs. Jarvis' and that will be item 3E.
Thank you. Item 3E, we will discuss the heart rate monitor bid in the PEP grant, and that will be Mrs. Oakwes.
Yes, thank you. We wanted to share with you the bid results for the heart rate monitors, which we would like to purchase as part of the Carol M. White PEP grant. As you may recall, we are in year two of the PEP grant for our secondary physical education and health program, so impacting our schools at grade seven through 12. This follows a very successful implementation of the elementary PEP grant, which took place the three years prior to this one commencing. And so, I have with me my PEP partner in crime, and our PEP project director for the district, who does an outstanding job of leading our staff through this grant work, and also managing all of the tenants of the grab, grant, specifically many of these special purchases that we have. So, this evening, we're bringing to you a bid for Polar Heart Rate Monitors. We received two bids, as you'll see on the bid specification sheet included in your packet. We had two vendors bid on this, and one bid was not complete. The section related to web services was for a one-year subscription, and we had specified a two-year subscription in the bid specifications, therefore, the recommended bidder is Polar Electro Incorporated, for a total bid price of $74,728, to again be paid for out of the Carol M. White PEP grant. I'd like to just have Ms. Archibald spend just a minute sharing with you how we would be utilizing the heart rate monitors.
Hello, everybody. You know, this heart rate monitor purchase is probably the most, the biggest game changer for our students, because we are now going to be able to give our students the technology at their hands to understand their heart rate and their fitness level. It's one thing to teach a student about what your max heart rate is and what the number should be, but now, we're going to be able to individually tell them what their resting heart rate is, where, what the number should be if they're working out for heart rate endurance, or if they're working for muscular strength for a certain period of time. For the three high schools, we are purchasing enough so that during an hour, you can have three classes going at one time with this technology. So, we could have somebody in the fitness center, we could have somebody doing yoga, we could have a basketball game going on. It's, can be used in any of our areas. These, we're going to last for a long, long time. The reason we're doing the numbers that we are is we decided it was best to have each student receive one for the semester, and that's going to be their strap that goes underneath their shirt at their rib level, and they're going to put that on when they change their clothes, so when they come out, they're going to be ready to go. When they're done at the end, it requires very little maintenance, which we're very lucky for high school kids. At most, at the end of the week, they can just run it underneath the sink with water, and we ask them, hey, once a month, maybe take it home and have your mom use just a mild detergent. At the end of the semester, they come in these nice mesh bags, and we will run them through the washer one time before we give them out. So, students aren't having to pay for it, we're giving them out, and then they're returning them to us at the end of the semester. The physical education teachers felt that that was a very important piece to do, so that is why we purchased the number that we are. At the middle school, we'll be able to run two classes at a time, so that is why the numbers are large. The straps for the middle school, the same process, they'll give them out at the beginning, get them back at the end, and we have licensing right now for every hour at the high school, three people, so that's nine licenses running per hour at the high schools, and then six at the middle schools. So, that is also why the pricing is a little bit higher. We're going to come back next year and add more years, so that we have this service for a long period of time.
Yes. My point? Exactly how many of these kits, or how many are in a kit?
It's a little complicated. There's 600 kits up here, and they're going to be divided, if you look, the straps, the second bullet, they don't have that one, they run in extra small to small, so we ordered 210 of those, we ordered 600 of the medium. The medium to large, we ordered 30 kits.
How, Sharon, how's the data going to be used?
The data can be used for a lot of different ways. We are, next week, going to be giving our teachers iPads, and they now have a projector and an Apple TV, so if they want, they are going to immediately, they can just press a button, once we have the licensing on their iPad, and it can be projected up on the wall. We can use just a student number, we could use a first name, we could use student IDs, so people don't know who is what. It'll be really impactful to be able to see those up on the wall, and the students being able to see what their heart rate is, how hard they're working, and how that reflects. So, for me, it's an individual basis. We're not going to base grades on it. This is certainly a learning curve for them, to understand what their body does and how it reacts to exercise. And if parents wanted, they can log on, and they could see their students and how they're doing in class, and that could be a conversation between a teacher and a parent, if they wanted to talk about that.
And then, the district will also gather that data as part of our report to the federal government for our PEP work, to show increase in physical activity and physical fitness of the participants.
Because this involves an individual student in what could be health, is there any HIPAA problem with this?
The students aren't identified on the data that, that come back to the district, they're simply, it's in aggregate, and so, they're not identified as individual students, nor are they, as they do the surveys that we conduct each year. So, they're not, there are no identifying factors in that data that's called at the district level, or that we send out as part of our yearly report.
So, other students aren't going to know whose data is up there?
Correct. Correct. And before we launch this, I have put together a letter that will go home to parents, and if they prefer, they can hunt up.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Burton?
Back to the HIPAA question, you mentioned that, that student information can be displayed either via a student ID number, or name, or whatever.
Or number, or nothing.
Okay. If we, if we did identify by name, however, we potentially could get into HIPAA problems, because other students in that class know who Mary, Jim, and John are.
Correct. So, then, we'll do student ID or a number.
Okay, something that would be more anonymous.
Yes.
Okay. And again, I think most of, if not all of us at this table, but for the benefit of the public, will you explain the funding for this, so that's not, it's not out of, out of other funds that could, would have been coming out of the classroom, but explain exactly what the PEP grant is to folks.
Correct. A year ago, we were awarded $1.3 million for three years for the federal PEP grant, which is full... which is fully funded by Washington. And in the report, it says very exact on what we purchase, how much we purchase, and each of these items, especially the high end, they are monitored, and we have this in our original PEP grant that we were going to purchase iPads, we were going to purchase polar heart, or heart rate monitors, and that is fully funded by the federal Washington Carol M. White PEP grant.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Considering our litigious society, my question is, what kind of vulnerability does the district or even the individual teachers have, assuming something bad happens to one of the kids and they've been on this heart rate monitor, is there any chance that they can come back to the school district and say, well, you should have known, you've been monitoring the child?
You know, I'm going to just hop in, and I, I don't want to speak off the cuff on that one, so we can certainly, you know, review that with our legal counsel. As, as with any, you know, the normal immunities, I'm assuming, would be in place that are, with regard to our staff member, but having this information, whether or not it would have any additional liability for the district, we can certainly look into that.
Okay. Appreciate you there.
No, yeah, I mean, that's why we have general liability insurance, so, for anything, whether it's, you know, I mean, whether it's that or anything else that someone may want to sue us for.
Okay.
And at every single physical education class and every single time they take the class, they do have to take home a medical form where information like that would come back to us and we would be alerted to it.
Okay.
And that's a normal practice.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We'd like to pass this beyond the voting agenda.
Okay. And a regular item?
A regular, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. The next item that we will be addressing is also with Mrs. Jarvis, and that will be item 3A.
Item 3A is the 2013 bond audit presented by Ms. Lisa Abby.
Thank you very much. Very pleased tonight to bring forward the financial statements and result of the bond audit. We had originally planned to have Yo and Yo here, and they were prepared to be here on Monday night, but unfortunately, they had a conflict for tonight. So I will stand in for them tonight, and Brian Dixon from Yo and Yo will be here on Monday night to present as well. So we will, when we actually ask you to vote and accept the financial statements, Yo and Yo will be here. I did provide the financial statements to you in your board packet, a little, little bit smaller than we usually see in our regular financial statements. Just wanted to mention a couple things, remind you, I'm sure you recall that, one, we are required to conduct an independent audit of our bond funds. The law requires that we do it when the funds are substantially complete, that's one way to do it. So because we're issuing our bonds in two series, we issued first series in 2013, we'll issue probably the second series in 2016, that would require basically two audits and two reports to the state. The other way you also see it done is that districts do the bond audit alongside their financial statement audit each year as part of their regular process. Well, that was also a little bit complicated for us, since Plant Moran is our financial auditor. We wanted to have someone independent from Plant Moran because they're also our owner's representative on this bond. We wanted to, we weren't required to, but we discussed it here, and the board asked us to hire a separate auditor. So we did an RFP, and we did pick Yo and Yo as our bond auditor. So what they will do going forward is to be a part of the annual financial statement process, and going forward, they will do their bond audit at the end of the fiscal year, just like we would our financial audit. But because we're a little bit behind the eight ball going out for the bid and picking another firm, we're actually a little bit late. We normally would have this done in, in the late fall. But this bond audit is actually for 13 months. You'll recall that the community approved the bond in May of 2013. We actually sold the bonds, in other words, we received the cash in June of 13. So this audit period is from June 2013 through June 2014. So we actually have 13 months in this financial statement. So again, this is for a 13-month period. First, I would just like to say that the bond audit went very well. Plant Moran came here, as they do a financial audit, they looked at, picked sample items, looked at all the detail of it, looked at our processes, our procedures, just like we would a financial audit. They have issued an unqualified or unmodified opinion, you'll recall, that is the highest opinion, that's, that's the best we can get. As far as testing of internal controls, they also indicated no material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies. So those are all the best things that they can say, and that's included in your audit report here tonight. I'm not going to go through a lot of detail, this is really pretty straightforward. You have the financial statements. If you look on page three of the actual financial statements, this is the balance sheet. Again, this is through June of 2014, so it is not going to, this is, these statements are not going to reflect the majority of the work and the money that we have spent since June for our Phase One projects. So you can see the assets of $101 million and a fund balance and liabilities of $101 million. The assets generally are cash at that point. I mean, that's really where all of our assets are at, at June of 14. So the next page will show you a statement of revenue and expenditures. Again, you're, you're going to show very little revenue, that's primarily interest investment. And then the expenditures, you can see detailed professional fees, construction, the buses, all the things that you know that we purchased this year, the abatement and the bond issuance costs for a total of $14 million. The other financing sources actually shows you the $103 million from the proceeds of the bond and the $5 million of the premium on the bond for total resources coming in of $108 million. That's basically, you'll remember, the proceeds that we showed you when we sold the bonds. So we have excess of revenue over expenditures of $94.8 million. Again, that's the fund balance. You can, if you haven't, take your time reading the notes to the financial statements, very straightforward, they tell you about the 2013 bond, Series One, what our expectations are for Series Two. And then the very last page, as I said, this was for 13 months, it just shows you for the year ended June 2013, what our expenditures were in June 2014. So if you want to see that breakout of the one month and the 12 months, you have that there. Again, for $14 million of expenditures. And then, of course, the letter telling us how well everything went through the audit, and we're pleased with Yo and Yo and their professionalism and thoroughness when they were out here, they did pick a number of items to look at. So again, when we had talked about this, we did say that rather than doing it twice, we felt for us it made more sense to do this on an annual basis and be able to report out to the Board of Education each year on the financial results of the audit. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. McDonald. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby, can you clarify for me just on page six of the audit where it says bond issuance costs, and since I don't know, so I'm asking, the minus $25,000, what does that represent?
We actually got a refund from one of the rating agencies. They overcharged us and they gave us a refund.
I'm glad they found it.
It was good, that was nice.
It was nice.
Yeah, you remember, we have to have ratings by Moody's or Standard and Poor's, and they had costs associated with that, that's in the bond issuance costs, and it was actually a refund.
And you'll also recall that we hired Stutter Barge to monitor all that for us.
Right. So, and then, I know this is very new on this, but as far as paying it down, probably got like this much, right?
Well, you would have seen that in the financial statements, if you look at the back of the financial statement, you mean in terms of what we paid down on the principal and interest?
Right.
Yeah, so every year in our financial statements, that's, that's a part of that.
That's in the debt fund.
Right.
Okay.
It's in, yeah, and it's at the very back of the financial statements, it's all by itself a separate piece of paper that shows what we owe in the entire timeframe for any outstanding debt. So for both the 2013 bond and then for the 2014 refunding bond.
Okay.
So this audit only audits the construction, the actual spending of the money.
The actual work and what we spot. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
But we do pay principal and interest on it every year, so we will be paying it down. So this would go on the regular agenda, and we will have a presentation by Yo and Yo, Brian Dixon from Yo and Yo.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All righty. The next item that we will be addressing tonight on our agenda would be item 3D. Mrs. Jarvis?
3D, the appointment of the auditor for the 2014-15 audit. And once again, we'll hear from Ms. Abby.
Thank you very much. We have been, we, three years ago, went out for bid for auditing services and recommended Plant Moran for our financial audits for three years. That was through, last year through 2014. I know there was discussion at this study session regarding the level of service that we've received from Plant Moran, which is excellent, and looking at Plant Moran, if they would continue to hold their fee for the financial audit for the next year, that the board was interested in continuing or extending their contract for another year. We did meet with our auditors and our partner, Terry Pollock, who you all have met several times, and they are pleased to extend the same fee that we paid last year on into this year, for this year's audit, 2015 audit. I did mention, you have the detail in your packet, I did mention the implementation of GESB 68, which if you remember, Terry talked about at the, at our meeting when they presented the financial statements this year, in fact, they've talked about it, I think, for three years. But that's the implementation, which will be brand new, where in our financial statements, we will have to represent our portion of the state's unfunded pension liability. You recall, she talked about that, and since it's brand new, that would be a new service, which would be separate from the financial audit, and would be a one-time cost of about $2,000 to $3,000. So again, for the same basic service that they've provided for many years, they would maintain their fee, and they're, they're, they're still figuring out exactly what it's cost them, but she estimated $2,000 to $3,000 for implementing that. That would, that would be true with any auditors. So our recommendation right now would be to go forward with Plant Moran, continue on with them for another year. The other option, of course, is, is for the board to ask us to go out for an RFP, but I do think that this has been a good relationship with Plant Moran, they're an excellent firm, they do a great job, they do, they do know our, our district. I think you've seen the results of the work that they do for us, not only in our financial audits, but whenever we have accounting or finance questions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty.
Seeing none.
So we'll put that on the agenda for next week to extend it for one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Abby.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis and Mrs. Abby.
Thank you.
The last item tonight that we'll be addressing is policy, section 4B, and we'll be hearing from Mrs. Bonnefield.
There's just a couple additional policies that we need to go over, and I believe this is going to be the first reading on Monday, correct?
Correct, if we decide to go that route with them.
Yeah, basically what you have is grammatical or clerical corrections to 13 policies. When the Board of Education went through and reviewed all the policies, there are a variety of policies that you identified that you didn't need to change in content, but you just needed to clean up. So for example, you'll see capitals changed to small letters, or small letters changed to capitals, or maybe a reference corrected, and that's pretty much the only changes that you see before you. So, you know, maybe a date crossed out.
Schools, forgotten to live in the schools.
Yeah. One place where you say legislation of and adoption, you say legislation and adoption just because it didn't read well. And so I hadn't planned on actually covering all those changes tonight, those are all in your packet, and, and there are really no substantive changes in regards to, we're changing the meaning of any of those policies, it's just cleanup work based on your review of all of them. So what we'd be happy to do is to put all these on the agenda for next Monday for a few, first reading, and explain to the community that these are just changes in either grammatical or clerical nature, and, and do not change the intent of any of the existing, of those policies that are being presented.
Because this is the second time we've looked at them, we've talked about them and covered them in...
Yes, absolutely. Tonight is not the first time.
Actually, the third time, when we went over the policy and then committed that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So these have been reviewed by you on multiple occasions. Tonight is just to let you know that if you'd like, we can get these things off of our plate and cleaned up in the policy book by taking formal action on them starting next Monday. Good point.
So yes, we can put that on.
First reading.
First reading next Monday.
Okay.
Okay. That is the last of the items that we have planned on covering tonight. Again, if you joined us partway through our meeting, you may note that we are postponing two of the agenda items to future board meetings, and that would be the quarterly report for the bond from Plant Moran Crusa, that will be next Monday night, and our Code of Ethics discussion will be at our next, I believe it'll be on our next committee of the whole meeting, and I don't have that date with me.
Probably on the first of March, sometime around.
Early March, it may be March 2nd, that sticks in my head, but it'll be, it'll be our next committee of the whole meeting for that discussion. Is there any other business to come before the board tonight? Seeing none, we have completed our agenda items, and we are adjourned.